Okay, Terry, unfortunately, I have no agenda in front of me, so I need a little help here.
Sure, no problem. You want to call the meeting to order? And then I can start.
We already, that already, okay, this is the special meeting of the Board of Directors of Marin Municipal Water District for December 12th at 5:00 PM.
Great, and with that, let us go into the first ceremony of the swearing in. So with the first person, Director-elect Matthew Sampson of Division One.
Okay, let me, let me, let me, let me say something first. I just want to welcome all you guys. And, you know, I look forward to working with you and to, you know, pulling together some successful collaboration. Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, no problem. So Director Matt Sampson, if you can please raise your right hand. There you are.
There we go.
Please repeat after me.
Yep.
I state your name.
I, Matthew Sampson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Yes.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of California.
And the Constitution for the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon from which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Matt.
Thank you. If it's okay, I'd like to just say a few remarks. Great. Well, first, Terry, thank you for that. Appreciate it. This has been a long time coming, so this is a big moment. But I'd like to begin by acknowledging the dedicated service of our previous board members. And to say that your leadership and contributions are appreciated, and I thank you for your time as board members. I'd also like to thank General Manager Hornstein and department staff for their incredibly warm welcome up to this point. And that the department had briefings have been very informative, and I greatly appreciate what you have done. I have to say thank you to my wife and our two daughters who are getting in trouble. So Kristen, Natalie, and Claire. But I also like to acknowledge the public and the electorate that participated in this election. The support and trust you have shown me up to this point is humbling, and I look forward to delivering on the promises. But I also like to acknowledge that your message has been received, and I hear your desires for water security. I share that desire and intend to work with all board members, the entire board, to improve our resiliency in face of drought and climate change. This position is something I do not take lightly and understand the responsibility as a board member, as a steward of not only the district's watershed lands, but our water supply, and look forward to getting to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, we will go on to Division Third District-elect Ranjiv Kush. Sir, if you can please raise your right hand. I repeat after me, or I'm sorry, I, please state your name.
I, Ranjiv Kush.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon I am, on which I'm about to enter.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I think like Matt, I'm hoping that I can say a few words, Terry. Great, you know, I think, you know, transitioning from the campaign to this job, you know, it's, it's an interesting mental shift. And to really complete the transition, I have to acknowledge a few groups and give my gratitude. Number one is the team, mostly volunteers who made the campaign a success. There are so many of you. Please know that I am grateful to each of you for your advice, help, and encouragement. Number two is the Division Three supporters and voters. Thank you for investing in our water environment and recreation futures. We will work together to ensure that Marin is always a water secure, responsible, and honestly, wonderful place to live. Number three are the former and current MMWD directors who have given so much to build a great water supplier. You've set a very high bar, and I really look forward to learning from all of you. And finally, number four, General Manager Hornstein and all MMWD staff. Every meeting that we've had over the last few weeks honestly has left me further impressed by your skills, accomplishments, and commitment. And more energized to collaborate with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our district, I'm sorry, for Division Four Representative, Director-elect Jed Smith, can you please raise your right hand, please? I state your name.
I, Jed Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you. Hey, I am super humbled by this opportunity to serve our community and the great county of Marin and our district. I am proud to have transitioned from the campaign, which was an interesting for me, a somewhat unnatural process. But now I know what we're fighting for, democracy around the world. And, and what it did give me was a real sense of how to get to know our, our people and to meet as many, as many of our community members as possible. There are a lot of people that have a lot of interests and a lot of care, and I hope to serve you well. I am super appreciative of my family for putting up with me during this time, for supporting me during this process. And I am humbled by the opportunity, and I look forward to serving you well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to say something, like I said, welcome aboard, guys. And emphasizing what Director Smith said and Director Kush said, the campaigns are over. And you're, you got the job. Now, we need to go into a listening mode from your guys, learning, you got a steep learning curve to get through, and it takes a while, trust me, having gone through it years ago. So anyway, we look forward to working with you, and we'll do the best we can to keep you up to speed.
Yeah.
Okay, Terry.
Larry, with that, I just want to say, I wouldn't want to pass this chance to say just a few things to, this is, this is a really exciting moment. I'm sorry that we're not together in person. It's a, it's a big moment to have achieved all the campaigning, all the work that goes into it. And so, anyway, it's a very significant moment to get sworn in, so congratulations. And, you know, it's exciting, you know, each of you, as new board members, brings expertise to the board that we're going to need to successfully carry out our core mission, which is that safe and reliable and affordable clean water supplies. And achieving that goal has never been, I think, more complex probably for Marin and probably the entire state and much of the world is grappling with the growing populations and climate change and other demands. And, you know, this coming year, we've got some really big decisions, really big investments to make in our water supply reliability. We have lots of investments that we will be making in terms of just maintaining our, our hundred-plus-year-old infrastructure. And managing our 22,000 acres of watershed that provides our water, but it also is, is a fire hazard, but it's also a recreational resource and biologically, you know, an incredibly rich place and ecosystem, ecosystems that are extremely important, as well as endangered species. And, you know, as a relatively new member of the board, you know, I know the steep learning curve that each of you is facing. And likewise, you know, the, the hope that we all have is that we have a really amazing Marin water staff, and that's from the people who, who are out there fixing pipes on the road, to the people who are in the treatment plants, to the folks who are in the front office administering things, to the leadership teams that are all really committed, really dedicated, and continue to be an incredible source of information. And as we are now in a mode where we are meaning to hear and listen, not only to each of our new board members who will bring new perspectives, but we also have a really engaged public. I think it's paying attention like never before. And that's a great opportunity for us all to learn and listen and see what we can do to work collectively and collaboratively, because I think everybody cares about the same stuff, which is safe, reliable water supply and a healthy watershed. So, super excited for the work we've got ahead, and congratulations.
Thank you, buddy.
Your rain, your rain dances have worked so far, so keep them up, okay?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Larry, I just wanted to, if I could briefly,
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the staff at Marin Water, welcome, and we look forward to working with you and implementing the policy direction of this board. Welcome.
President Russell, we do have one public comment on this item so far. Can, may I call on that person?
Yes.
Okay, oh, there they come. So we have several comments from the public. I just want to remind everyone that you have three minutes to leave your comment. And once you hear the, the sound of a low gentle ring, that means to please wrap up your comment. So the first three speakers are Katie, Brian Colbert, and Larry Minnikes. I'm going to unmute you, Ms. Katie. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. I just wanted to congratulate all of the new board members. A very exciting time, and really look forward to seeing this new team collaborate and work hard together to solve some really important issues. So I just wanted to say congratulations and good luck.
Thank you. Brian Colbert, please.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. My name is Brian Colbert. I'm a ratepayer residing in San Anselmo. I also happen to be a council member and former mayor, but my remarks, my remarks this evening are entirely personal. I would like to congratulate all the new board members. Change is hard, but change is good. I know you have a steep learning curve, but I'm sure all of you will conquer it. The people have spoken, and we are hungry for change, and we don't want to wait forever. In particular, I'd like to congratulate Matt and Ranjiv, both of whom I endorsed. I place great confidence in your integrity and your hard work. My last remark will be this. During the campaign, many people asked me, what is a water scientist? I said, well, when you vote for Ranjiv and he's elected, you will find out. Finally, I'm always ready to help in any way I can. As I say, I am a resident and a ratepayer. Best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Minnikes, and then Tom Boss, please.
Good evening, folks. Well, we have important work ahead of us, so I'm going to be as brief as possible and just congratulate our new board members. And reflecting what Brian Colbert just said, congratulations to the board. I think it really is an opportunity and looking forward to the future here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Larry.
And Mr. Tom Boss, please.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief as well. Just wanted to congratulate all three new board members. Really looking forward to working with each of you, especially on the watershed recreation issues and preservation of that cherished, cherished place. So, anyway, best of luck and congratulations.
Thank you. And Ms. Mimi Willard, please.
Good evening. Just briefly, want to extend my best wishes to both the new and returning board members. You face many challenges. I'm impressed and grateful to all of you for being willing to invest the time in addressing these challenges. I know that you come at a time when the district has financial issues to be addressed. I expect that we are going to be looking at some very large rate increases. And I am optimistic that you are up to the task of doing this in a way that is fair and is, involves the engagement of the community to accept what has to be done in order to get us back onto strong financial footing. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further speakers. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Roger Roberts. I apologize. Mr. Roger Roberts came in. Hold on. Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to add my congratulations to all of you. I think we've had some conversations already, and I'm looking forward to further conservations to address the issues that are urgent and need resolution, and that will be an engaging exercise, I'm sure. And I look forward to that process with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. There are no further speakers.
Okay, well, thank you all for your comments, and let's get going here. Like I say, I'm, unfortunately, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so what's next?
Roll call, so that I can officially.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
All right. Director Ranjiv Kush.
Present.
Director Matt Sampson.
Present.
Vice President Monte Schmidt.
Present.
Director Jed Smith.
Present.
And President Larry Russell.
Here.
Now you can go.
Okay. Well, what's next?
The, the main item, the COSA.
COSA, okay. Are you ready for that, Ben?
Yeah, Brett's gonna pick this up. Our finance director.
Yeah, sure. So hello, my name is Brett Upandall. I'm the district's finance director. We do have one item on the agenda today left here, and that is the initial overview of the water rate study. And so I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen here. Hopefully, everybody can see that. All righty. So, the presentation today will cover these six items or so here. We'll do kind of a brief overview of the MMWD services, kind of how we're structured, and how we provide services to the community. We'll talk about the financial planning process overall, and then we'll kind of start taking a look at some updated longer-term projections. We'll talk a little bit about our capital infrastructure funding and the challenges we face in that area. And then we'll transition into kind of a, kind of a preview of the water rate-setting process and the calendar that's coming up before the next few months. We'll talk specifically about the communications outreach plan, and then we'll do a recap and next steps at the end. And I did want to mention today, too, that for the rate-setting process, we're working with a financial consultant called Bartle Wells. And they are both here today to answer any questions. We do have anything specific about the rate-setting process. We have Doug Dove, Bartle Wells, and Eric Helgerson of Bartle Wells as well. And we do have also our communications director, Adrian Mertens. She's here to talk more about the outreach plan when we get there. So I'll go ahead and go through the first couple parts here of the presentation. I did want to start off by just showing the MMWD mission statement. I think, you know, for many of us, this is a review and a recap, but I think it's also good to, to focus in on this again, as it really is kind of the guiding light as we start making strategic planning decisions, and we start looking about financial, you know, projections and the trade-offs therein. I think this, this particular mission statement is really good. It's, it's served us well in the past, and I think it will continue to guide us going forward. And so just to kind of read it off for you here, our mission statement here at the district is to manage our natural resources in a sustainable manner and to provide our customers with reliable, high-quality water at a reasonable price. So there's a lot in there, and like I said, I think it's served the district well over time, and so I just wanted to share that before we get too far into the financial details. In terms of just the district as a whole, it's good to have some context into kind of what we're talking about once we get into the financial details here. So just to remind this board and the public, we have a service area that covers 147 square miles, and that largely covers all of central and southern Marin. The district serves a little over 190,000 residents in the cities of Samerfell, Mill Valley, Fairfax, San Anselmo, Ross, Larkspur, Cordero, Tiburon, Belvedere, and Sausalito, and parts of unincorporated Marin County. I will note that Novato and West Marin are outside of our service area, so we do not cover services in Novato or West Marin. As a district, we provide about eight billion gallons of water to our customers each year. When you divide all of that into the cost of providing it, it shakes out to a little bit less than two cents per gallon that we provide that water to our customers. And then I also wanted to remind the public here and the board that we get 98% of our revenue directly from our customers. So the only remaining 2% that doesn't come from customers is interest earnings and rent revenue. And then finally, as a special district public agency, we do not make a profit, right? So we are here to provide services. All the funds that we take in, by law, we reinvest back into the system for the future benefit of our district here, of the residents of Marin. And so we do not make a profit. All the charges that we do pull in are for the cost of providing that water.
Brett, can I just ask a quick question on that? I, I think we're, if I'm not mistaken, required to create enough operating revenue to fulfill our covenants, which are at least 1.25 times what, what we, what we need. And so I don't know how we define profit in an agency like this, but we definitely need to create reserves. And, and so if I'm not mistaken, we, we, there is a surplus that we do use for capital for future projects.
Yeah, that's a really good point to make, Director Smith, in the sense that, you know, from year to year, there may be some fluctuations in the amount of revenue coming in and the amount of expenses going out. Some years you may make more revenue than expenses, and other years you may have more expenses than revenues, as we'll see here. And to your point, those go to reserves, and the reserves really are for future projects, for future services, or to buffer any kind of economic or revenue, or I mean, I should say, or weather impact. And then the, the, the specific formula you referred to is our bond covenant. So when we take up debt, condition of taking that debt is that we hold enough funds to pay that back and then some. And so we have to hold reserves for that, and we have to prove through some formulas that get pretty complicated that we are making enough revenue to cover not only our operating, operating expenses, but also the debt service at at least 125%. So you're exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so this kind of shows a little chart here of our service area. As I mentioned, you know, the, the light blue there is our actual service area, so covering most of central and southern Marin, does not cover north Marin or west Marin. You can see the watershed there and the additional two reservoirs we have, Sulagulie and Nikasio. What the, the point of this slide is to say that, you know, our water is locally sourced, so we get 75% of our water from Marin reservoirs, one of the seven reservoirs you see there. And we do pull in another 25% of our water from Sonoma County. We have seven reservoirs, as I mentioned. We have three water treatment plants that operate around the clock to, to clean and distribute that water. We have a network of over 900 miles of pipelines and 100 pump stations that help get the water throughout all the, the houses and businesses here in the district. We do have about 60,000 service connections. And so, again, there's a lot of numbers here, and some, some of you are more familiar with these, but they really do, you could spend probably a whole presentation just on the numbers I went through here today in the sense of how those compare and how we're trying to shape the district going forward. But for context, these are kind of the standard kind of ratios that we have in terms of our overall infrastructure and our customer base. And again, one more context setting slide here for our budget in terms of the numbers or budget overview. We have a total budget of $116 million. That's in the current fiscal year, fiscal year '22, '23. And that's in all funds look, so when we take our operating budget and our capital budget combined, it's $116 million. The district has operated on a two-year budget cycle, and each budget cycle builds upon the planning efforts of prior years. The next budget cycle for the district begins in about six months, the upcoming July 2023. And so, you know, as part of not only the financial projection we're talking about today, and as part of the rate-setting process, we will also be bringing to this board budget proposals for the upcoming two-year cycle. When you break down the numbers a little bit more, look at expenses there, we have about 70% of our expenses are for ongoing operations. The other 30% is for capital projects or debt service. And then kind of taking a look at the whole budget again, personnel costs are about half of the budget, or 40% is the slideshow here. We have 243 budgeted full-time employees here at the district. On the revenue side of the house, about 50% comes from variable water sales, meaning that the, the amount of revenue we get depends on how much water is used by our customers. About 45% of our revenue comes from fixed service charges, and the remaining 5% comes from non-rate sources, such as either connection fees, permits, other types of fees we charge in the district or rents.
Sorry, Brett, I don't, I hope I don't take too much time, but I think of two clarifying points that I think are important for the public to know. It's 243 full-time employees, but I think we're currently at about 210, because we have quite a few open hires. Is that correct?
That's about right. Yeah, we have about 12 to 13% vacancy right now, so we have not filled all those positions. So yes, budget basis 243, and yeah, actual, we have about, about 210, 215, like I said.
Yeah, and, and, and on the revenue front, I, I think we're missing grants. There's a significant amount of federal money and California money that, that would be available. I don't know if you call that revenues, but I'm sure counting on that to be an important resource for our capital needs going forward.
Yeah, that's another really good point. Yeah, so for, for grants, you know, we don't always budget them into the ongoing budget plan, because we don't know if we're going to get them or not. We were always applying for grants and trying to maximize and kind of leverage any kind of outside funding sources we do have. And typically, those are put into projects, as you mentioned, kind of on a one-time basis. And so, you know, the, the numbers here are more kind of the ongoing, long-term budget. And like I said, we don't know we're getting grants on most of those, so I didn't include them for this slide, but they are a key part of our, our capital program for sure.
Thanks.
Okay, just kind of a visual representation of our org chart. This does change a little bit over time, but for the most part, the, the five core service areas at the bottom there remain the same each year, administration, engineering, operations, watershed management, and then water resources. I would know just for, for, for the board and the public that operations is our biggest division. And the other, like I said, those five don't change much over time in the sense of how we provide services to the district. They may change kind of in shape or in form, you know, in each year, but the overall business of the district doesn't change from year to year. In terms of longer-term historical budget trends, I think this is again good for context, and as we get into the rate-setting cycle and the budget-setting cycle, you can see here that our current budget of 243 staff members has been largely, largely unchanged the past five years or so. And even looking back Staff members has been largely, largely unchanged the past five years or so. And even looking back to two thousand fourteen. Essentially in that tight range of two forty three to two forty eight or so. And that was a significant change from, you know, two thousand twelve and thirteen, and even looking farther back when we had two hundred and sixty general count of FTE. And so we, we cut about whatever that is twenty positions or so at the end of two thousand thirteen into the two thousand fourteen budget. And I would say that those were difficult cuts at the time. They really kind of cut out a lot of the. You know, some of the lower hanging fruit and some of the areas that we could cut during the time. And so we've been operating on a pretty lean budget since then. As you can see, with very little change in our overall staffing levels over the past ten years or so. In terms of dollars, this is the same, you know, ten or twelve years of budget that you can see here. And this is our operating budget. And I've, I've put the trend line there that shows that we had an average annual increase of about four percent per year. And that's largely in line with just general CPI or inflation measures here in the Bay Area. And so again, kind of slow and steady, it has been the mantra here in terms of operating fund, in terms of staffing levels over the last ten or twelve years. And largely, like I said, kind of within this four percent range from year to year, very little changes. All right. So this is one slide here. I know it's a relatively simple slide, but I think it's really kind of a key financial concept as the title mentions there. And just really what it shows is the, the difference, the stark difference in fact between our expense model and our revenue model. So. As the bullet point show there, nearly all of the district's expenses are fixed, meaning that, you know, from year to year. Our expenses don't change depending on how much water we do or don't distribute. We have the same number of water treatment operators, we have the same number of maintenance workers. We calculate the same amount of bills each year. That doesn't change whether we're using a higher amount of water or a lower amount of water. You know, the five percent that you see there is a variable on our expense side. That really is just a kind of marginal expense change of the amount of electricity it costs to pump water to, to the residents and the, and the customer connections. As well as the marginal expense we save on chemicals to treat the water that goes out. But again, ninety five percent of our overall expenses are fixed from year to year and don't change. On the flip side, if you look on the revenues and the, on the right hand side of this, more than half of our revenues are dependent on the amount of water distributed to our customers. And so it really is a difficult model in a sense of, you know, matching revenues and expenses when. You know, the, the business of the district is really just providing the service and making sure services can get to our customers. Whereas the revenue model really is selling water. So it's kind of an apples and oranges matte mix of revenues and expenses. Generally speaking, in most water utilities deal with this kind of a mismatch, you know, in the model. And I think, you know, all, all of us are trying to tinker with what's the right mix of a fix versus a, a variable in terms of revenue. And I think, you know, for this slide going forward, you know, you'll see in a, in a couple of slides here, it tends to work better when there's not a lot of big changes in the amount of water that's used. And as we see here, you know, the, the, the last couple of years, it certainly last year and this year. When we have such a smaller amount of, of revenue, or I should say of water being sold, it really does have some significant impacts to our overall budget. And so. This shows our water demand, meaning how much, you know, water our customers have, have been using from the system over the past twelve or thirteen years. The dotted line they're going across the, the middle shows our tenure average about twenty two thousand seven hundred acre feet. And I would note that this is billable sales. This is the amount of water we bill for. So there may be some difference in the amount of water produced. At our water production facilities, this is our billing data here, which largely mirrors the overall trends, but there are some. Some discrepancies between the production data and the billing data here. But nonetheless, our tenure average twenty two thousand seven hundred acre feet. You can see, you know, the, the drought there in the, in about ten years, seven or eight years ago, two thousand sixteen and seventeen. We had some conservation during those years, kind of just under twenty thousand acre feet that we used. You can see the high point there during the COVID years of fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty one. We had, we had the most recent high of twenty four thousand four hundred acre feet of water consumed in the district. And then you can really see the dramatic reduction, right? Twenty two percent reduction there in fiscal year twenty two. A drop from twenty four thousand acre feet all the way down to nineteen thousand acre feet. And you can see also the nineteen thousand acre feet fiscal twenty two is much lower than it was in fiscal sixteen or seventeen. And so going from the highs of fiscal twenty one down to the lows of fiscal twenty two, that's really what I'm referring to when I say that. You know, it's, it's, it's a difficult financial balance to achieve when you have such a dramatic swing. And so. Now, on one sense, you know, our customers did a great job of conserving water in response to the drought. We needed that at the time. And then the other sense that really throws things into, into a little bit of turmoil when you talk about the finances, because we're so dependent on that variable revenue each year. You'll see fiscal twenty three in the far right of this. I have it shaded, you know, we are expecting a little bit of a rebound this year in the sense of, you know, coming away from the lows of last year. We're seeing a four to five percent increase so far this year. That's a number we'll keep our eye on throughout the winter and into the spring as we kind of hone in on our projections going forward, but. We're still looking like we're in that around twenty percent, you know, seventeen or eighteen percent below what we had budgeted going into the cycle in terms of water sales. And when you translate that into actual dollars, so the slide I had before was just overall acre feet of water distributed. And translate that into dollars here, this is our, our water sales revenue trend. So this is just the variable portion of our water sales. And so in the last two years, as you would expect in the last slide, you know, when you see water sales declining by over twenty percent. You're seeing the revenue also decline in this, in this particular category by over twenty percent. And so taken together, the two years fiscal twenty two and then the projected values here for fiscal twenty three. You take that together and that's actually a loss to the district of over, of about twenty five million dollars over the past two years. And so. You know, we'll talk about, you know, how we've covered the gap over the past two years, but I also note on the far right of this slide. And not only is it a twenty five million dollar kind of problem in the past, but it's also still a thirteen million dollar ongoing shortfall going forward. So. In kind of the budget world and the financial planning world, you know, really translating, you know. Ongoing effects and differentiated them from some of the one time effects in the past is, is a key concept. And so in, in a lot of these slides, you'll see I'm going forward here, I'm really trying to take, you know, what was the trend? And trying to translate it into dollars as we can plan for the next four years into the dollar impact. So. This particular water sales number is about thirteen million dollars of the annual ongoing shortfall. And so this next chart here speaks more on the expense side and this talks about our purchased water and how we use that to augment our local water supply. And so, you know, as we've done since the seventies here at the district, we rely on imported water from Sonoma County to help fill the gap in terms of the overall demand here within the county. You know, typically they'll stay in a pretty predictable range or pretty manageable range, as you can see, especially here the last five years, twenty eighteen, nineteen and twenty. The amount that we budgeted for our, our imported water was very close to the amount we actually needed. And what happened in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two is as the rainfall did not come here, as we had a local drought. We used more Sonoma water than planned to basically backfill our local supplies. And so. To the tune of about two million dollars in fiscal year twenty one, we had to spend two million dollars of our reserves essentially to. To, to help, you know, bring enough water in to meet the demand. And there's another four million dollars in fiscal year twenty two, we had to, to use above and beyond the budget. And so. Again, this is part of the plan. It's part of how the overall system works, but it does have a financial impact. And so over those two years, that's a total of six million dollars in unplanned expenses. And I would also note that it's not just a dollar for dollar thing. So when we import water from Sonoma. That actually comes at a marginal cost that's more expensive than our local water. So. In a certain sense, we have a double whammy going on. We're, we're selling less overall waters. We're making less revenue. But at the same time, we're having to purchase more water. It's costing us more water and more money to bring water into the system. And so we're kind of seeing on both sides and both of them essentially are, are costing us reserves. And so that's the slide here shows is the impact on our reserves of those two factors, the revenue loss and the, the imported water, as well as everything else going on in the district. So. You know, if you look back into fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty one, the district had very well funded reserves. And so we were very well prepared going into the drought, uh, in the COVID years. And over the next two years, you know, as, like I said, as, as intended, we relied on reserves to provide that emergency drought response, to provide the water we needed. And to absorb the revenue loss. And so the reserves acted as planned. You know, obviously we use probably more than we feel comfortable with. So we use forty million dollars over two years. Which is essentially about sixty percent of our discretionary reserves since fiscal year twenty one. And so. I think the trajectory there is something we'll talk about in a few slides, but I think the idea there is the district, the district, you know, had good reserves. We planned to use them and we have used them. And so. Now is the time to kind of, you know, plan on how we're going to. Change the shape of this chart and start to rebuild those reserves in the future.
Excuse me, Brett, this is Ranji. Just, just one clarification here. Between revenue losses over two years were about twenty five million, additional six million spent on. Unplanned water imports. So about thirty one million dollars there, but the drawdown on reserves is forty million or estimated about forty million over the two years. What's the additional ten million dollar difference?
Yeah. So I mean, that's a good point is that I mean, I'm kind of focusing on the, the big, the big pieces of the equation here. And so the additional ten million dollars is. You know, there, there's actually a lot of things going into it, but there was part of it that was planned use of reserves, right? So within our capital program, as I'll talk about a little bit later, we had a planned use of reserves. There's kind of a natural lumpiness in some of our expenses. So we're going to have, have money in one year and spend it a year or two later. So there's some natural kind of ups and downs with that. And there was also additional costs. We had, we've got additional paving costs. We've had the, you know, and I'll talk about a little bit later here. Higher costs for insurance, higher costs for chemicals. So we're starting to see, you know, cost increases in a lot of different areas. There are savings too. But it really is kind of the, the big two or three pieces that you mentioned at the beginning with our, you know, imported water and our water sales. And then there's probably a lot, you know, a handful of other smaller factors that are all also chipping away at the reserves. So it's not just one or two things.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So speaking of kind of the increasing costs in other areas, so this, this slide here, you know, kind of shows a couple of different inflationary measures. You know, and, and inflation has certainly been a topic of, of many discussions, you know, both here nationally of the last year or even longer. And I think these, these charts are kind of what, how it relates, you know, to the, the district's business of providing water. So. The, the group there and on the far left, that is just kind of an all items Bay Area, you know, everything in the mix was, what is the CPI read telling us? And you can see that. You know, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, even twenty and twenty one, we were in that comfortable, comfortable range of, you know, two, three, maybe four percent, that kind of the range that we're all used to seeing around here. And then within the last year, the yellow bar there, twenty twenty two, it spiked to six point eight percent. So. That number, all items number of six point eight percent alone is a big number. But. Here at the district, you know, we, a big portion of our budget goes in these other three areas, which is you can see fuel utilities there in the middle, electricity, more specifically. And construction costs. Those three are not only double digit figures in twenty twenty two, but getting closer to twenty percent on electricity. But you can also see that in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty one, both of those were already trending pretty high and getting close to, you know, six, seven, eight percent. And so. The district here has been already kind of feeling that inflationary pressure for two or three years before fiscal year twenty two. And then obviously it spiked this last year. And I think if you're looking at the data now and then looking into the forward looking projections. It's not expected to go down significantly. And I mean, I think there's a debate on whether or not inflation has peaked or not, but I think most people will agree that it's not just going to go back down to that three or four percent range anytime soon. It's going to maintain this kind of higher, you know, persistent inflation, at least for a couple of years. And so. These are kind of broad measures, as I mentioned, the construction costs, electricity, fuel utilities. This next slide here is more specifics. In the sense of what's really impacting the district's budget. You know, part of this directive, because she gets into your question of, you know, where do the other monies go? And so these are again, four or five other key areas of where we've been spending our money and how we're starting to see pressures, you know, build going forward. The top item there is again, purchased water. So not only are we using more water that I had mentioned on my first slide, they were back, you know, backfilling or importing more. Of our local supply over the last two years from Sonoma. But we're also, they're also passing along costs to us. So the first bullet there is a six to eight percent per year increase in the base rate. That's what we've seen the last couple of years and we expect to see that even going forward. And we've seen estimates even approaching ten percent as they. Decide on the price range in terms of how much they're going to be charging their customers for Sonoma water. So. Where we're planning on at least six to eight percent of a per year, a base rate increase in terms of the unit cost for Sonoma water. And then, you know, as we get into the, kind of the water supply planning, you know, we think we're going to have to use a similar amount in the next couple of years that we've used in the past, meaning. About two thousand acre feet above our contractual minimum. And so for those of you that, that know kind of the finer details of our Sonoma agreement, we have a minimum of purchase amount of fifty three hundred acre feet per year from Sonoma. And so, you know, we, whether we budget at that bare minimum, or in this case, we're recommending about two thousand feet above that to match kind of the, the longer term trends. That's just more money that needs to be put into the overall operating budget going forward. And so. Again, that's kind of a two prong factor of using more at a higher increasing base rate. Paving contracts, the second main set of bullets down there, that's when we do have to do repairs or any kind of pipeline repairs or, or breaks or anything, or even new. Replacement projects, not only are we seeing increased material costs in terms of supplies we need to, to do the work. But the local jurisdictions here in Marin are also increasing the requirements, meaning that we're having to repave a larger section of the street. Or take a bigger chunk and out of the trench when we are doing our work. So again, a kind of a, a bit of a two pronged, you know, increase there between our material costs and between the other jurisdictional requirements for the types of jobs you have to do. For our water treatment facilities, you know, the last bidding cycle that we completed last spring was over a twenty percent increase in the unit costs for the different particular chemicals that we have. Within our treatment plants. Similar speaking for our, our actual pipe purchases, you can see welded steel pipe there at the bottom or towards the bottom. We've seen a seventeen percent per year increase from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty two. So again, kind of that higher end. You know, not just six or eight percent, but closer to twenty percent in terms of unit cost inflation. And then finally, on the bottom, you know, insurance, it's obviously something the district has to, to provide. We have to, you know, maintain our own insurance. You know, since two thousand twenty one, we've seen over a fifty percent increase in our base premium. Largely, you know, we're not the only ones in this boat, you know, we, we happen to live in California and in the West. And so. You know, they're passing on the costs of kind of the trends of California with wild, increasing wildfire risk. As well as just the kind of increasing, you know, litigation or the litigious environment. That, that there are insurers are seeing across the state and across the country, frankly. So. You know, that's translating itself into increased insurance premiums for just kind of our base level of insurance that we've had for years here at the district. So. Again, these are, you know, specific examples, you know, five or six examples here for you. This is a subset of essentially everything it's on our expense side that we're seeing is starting to, to kind of bubble up in terms of inflationary pressures. But these are some of the biggest ones that have the biggest effects on our budget. Okay. So I just kind of went through some of the, the big, you know, kind of, you know, pressures we're seeing on the revenue side and expense side. And so I think, you know, part of the natural question will be, well, what are we doing about it? Right? So. I think this slide here, we've talked about a few times in the finance and administration committee meetings. But I do want to make sure that we're kind of being clear about how we're balancing the budget in the short term. And so. We have instituted expenditure reductions this last year to help mitigate the impacts of those revenue shortfalls. And specifically. You know, we've delayed recruitments and that's something that Director Smith mentioned at the beginning. Those are generating about four million dollars in savings in the current year. We've also deferred our capital investments. And so that's generated about a five million dollar one time savings in the current year. So. Both of those, you know. I would say those are the two areas we have the most control of, right? Our staffing levels and our, our capital investments. And so those are why, you know, they're, they're used here. But also, as you can see, they add up to nine million dollars. So they're a pretty big chunk of, of money that we're able to kind of help balance the books with. But I would say, you know, going back to my comments at the beginning, that, you know, we're, we're operating on a pretty lean baseline budget. We did a lot of cuts, you know, back after the great recession. You know, in the two thousand twelve and thirteen time, timeframe, there wasn't really a lot of extra areas left to cut here at the district. And so. Now we consider these two specific, you know, expenditure reductions to be very short term in nature because they're not sustainable, right? They, if we do anything more permanent in these areas, it will require a significant policy level change and significant service level adjustments. And so those would require a lot more kind of planning considerations. And really they're, they're just hamstringing the, the, the organization. And I think that's, you know. Become clearer this year so far in terms of staffing levels and in terms of our capital investments is they're not a good, you know, long term strategy and they're just enough to kind of. Help, help balance the books in the short term. And so we're not looking at those as long term solutions here. The other kind of, you know.
Bucket. Just to be quick and I, I, I wouldn't mind putting a finer point on this. You know, I, I think what I'm hearing the last few slides is that we've averaged on in essence, four percent increases in rates over time. I think we did even less over the last three or four years and passed some of those that rate increases savings onto our, onto our. Onto our community and our, and our payers. But, but the result has been that we've had to act in unnatural ways. That, that we don't have two hundred and forty three people on our staff, but we have in, in the two ten range that we haven't rehired, um, open hires and. Almost every group that I've met with seems to be short. And. I, I think the, the most direct example would be I met a, a wonderful guy who's a carpenter and has been working with us for many, many, many years. And he put in fifty hours of overtime over the last few weeks to help, to help cover for some leaks and, and some piping issues. So. So we're doing unnatural things to make the finances work here and, and it has a direct impact on morale. It has a direct impact on our ability to do our job and serve our public. And, and so I, you know, I, I don't think it's. It, it could be dire where we are, but it, this is significant. And although we call this savings, the costs are significant as well.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I couldn't agree more. Since that it's, it's in a certain sense, it's a little bit short sighted, right? Any savings we get now is really just kind of kicking the costs, especially on the capital side forward. And so, yeah, so that's, that's essentially why we're not necessarily looking at them for longer term permanent solutions. They're kind of considered a, a short term solution. The group there at the bottom in terms of other revenues we had. The group there at the bottom in terms of other revenues, we have is where, you know, and we're talking about rates here in a couple of minutes. But on the non rate revenue side, we are taking a look at, you know, every, you know, area we can. And so we have increased our watershed license revenues for our telecommunications sites in the top of Mount Tam. And so that was, you know, certainly kudos to the legal team here and then the operations and engineering teams. There was a lot of work to get a new RFP out for that this summer, but it is bringing in a substantial amount of new revenue. So we have increased our our license revenues there. We are, as as you mentioned, Director Smith at the beginning, we are leveraging grants and and many loan programs. So there are, you know, federal and state funding opportunities out there. We're leveraging those to kind of take some of the pressure off our capital program as well as our watershed. And two things that we are considering going forward is potentially charging local sanitary districts for the for the billing data that we provide. And then also maybe modifying some of our leak adjustment billing practices. What I would say, just in honesty, is that, you know, I think, you know, the watershed license is is a big revenue and obviously grants can be a game changer. The last two down there are probably smaller, right? So they they wouldn't necessarily be big game changers when it comes to, you know, the financial picture. But they are certainly things we're taking into consideration as we want to make sure we have a complete package as we talk about rebalancing the budget here at the district.
Brett, sorry, could you just say something about modifying leak adjustment billing practices, just a little background there?
Yeah, no, that's a good point. And so, you know, when our customers have leaks, we've got a policy on the books for how we go about, you know, kind of, you know, reimbursing essentially customers for for leaks, right? Because if we have a two, we have a two month billing cycle, as many of you may know. And so oftentimes a leak can go undetected for the better part of two months and they can add up to quite a bit of money. So, you know, in the in the past, in kind of going forward, we have policies in terms of how we go about, you know, refunding customers for those leaks. I can get into specifics if you want, but the idea here is that now some of our practices are a little bit less strict than other agencies. And so we can either put caps on the amount of the total dollar amount that we would reimburse. So we could kind of change the formula for how much the the customer would have to pay as opposed to how much we would reimburse the customer. Again, not a great plan because it's not necessarily the customer's fault all the time that the the leak is happening on their on their property. However, there are other agencies, you know, around the Bay area here that, you know, have a little bit stricter programs and and they force the customers to pay a higher percentage of that. So it's something we're taking a look at in terms of a survey and we'll bring back more information here this spring for your board to consider.
Thanks.
Okay, so structural challenges here. So I think in part of I, you know, briefly mentioned at the beginning, the budget process really builds upon kind of the strategic planning efforts, you know, of the past. And each year there's incremental change, you know, we don't just kind of, you know, start fresh each year. The district here, you know, as it's my first bullet pointer to the under here says that, you know, we're the first municipal water district in California. So we've had many years of going through budgets, many years of going through rate settings. You know, we've had the longest history by definition out of anybody. Through that process, what I have here is now four or five of the kind of the key issues that tend to face every board and every administration as we go through this process. With the fact that Marin is unique, right? We have many unique characteristics that result in either higher levels of investment that are needed and or higher per unit costs. And kind of when you start talking about rates, you know, I think the definition of a rate is a per unit cost, right? So, you know, the the four bullet points I have here, you know, as the oldest and first municipal water district in California, much of our infrastructure that's out there, it's under the ground that nobody sees is old and it's in need of replacement. And so I think, you know, we know that we have a schedule for that, working towards that. And I'll talk about it here in a few slides, but it's just a fact because we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be replaced. The second bullet point there, the topography and our low population density here in Marin County. You know, by definition, we have, you know, areas that are up and down on hills. We have areas that, you know, have long streets with very few actual residences in between. And so that just, you know, mathematically and on the engineering side requires a larger number of lift stations and a larger number of storage tanks, you know, when you started measuring on a per capita basis, like how do we compare to other agencies? We have more pump stations, more lift stations, you know, more storage tanks. When you divide it, you know, in terms of the overall system divided by the amount of customers we serve. The third bullet point there, you know, I think, you know, while we're very fortunate to have our own watershed up here, here within the county, you know, the the long term sustainable management of that watershed requires investment each year. And that's not something that every agency has to deal with. You know, many other agencies here in the area and across the state for a matter rely on imported water from the Sierras or they rely on the state water project. And in both of those cases, that's, you know, a much larger customer base to to spread your costs on and or it's subsidized in some level by by another government somewhere. So we don't have that. We have our own watershed here, which has its many benefits, but it also has its costs. And then finally, there at the bottom, you know, Marin in general is less able to benefit from economies of scale, right? So we have what's called a slow growth county here in Marin, meaning our population doesn't grow as much as other counties. We don't have a large commercial base. And so when you don't have growth, you kind of have, you know, kind of a fixed denominator. Yet the costs, as I talked about with the inflationary slides, you know, those are going up each year. So when you have low levels of population expansion and a smaller or at least flat customer base, you know, the math there is just that you don't get the economies of scale and you get a higher per unit cost. And so, you know, these four or five reasons on on the screen here, like I said, have been with Marin since the beginning. They'll continue to be here as we go forward. And so it really takes a lot of, you know, creative management and a lot of, you know, kind of dedicated foresight to be able to kind of take these into consideration as we decide on kind of the investment levels and the budget and the rates that we have set going forward.
Yeah, if I may, I I I think that 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 last slide is a critical point, maybe more for Adrian than anyone else. But but I I feel like we have a communication issue in 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 talking with so many of our citizens. I do not believe that they're aware of all of the costs, all of these fixed costs in managing twenty two thousand acres of land. And it's not just the drips coming out of our faucet. But 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 there, as as you mentioned earlier, ninety five percent of our costs are fixed and not variable. And 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 I think if people recognize that we're here to support this remarkable landscape and two million people using it on an annual basis, they would understand more about what we're trying to achieve than than just kind of bringing those drips out of the faucet. And and I might suggest, and and this this could be for a later discussion, that that we consider having a like a citizens rate panel, that that we have some sort of, maybe maybe it's an advisory group. There's a lot of very thoughtful people here and I think they'd like to like to be involved in this rate process. And the more they understand these structural challenges as you as you articulate them, I I think they could be super helpful. And I know we've had rate panels in the past, I think it'd been about ten years ago. And 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 I I think it'd be a good idea to bring some other smart people that that have educated me and and that could be helpful as we go through this process.
So, yeah, and I I couldn't agree more. I think it's 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 really hard to, you know, communicate and explain some of these complexities. And I think we've, like I said, we've been through the cycle many times here at the district. And I think, you know, as much as we can do to help our customers and our and and or everyone else in the district to understand and appreciate that, I think we're all better off for it. So thank you for that. I have two slides here to talk about, you know, more specific infrastructure planning. And I didn't want to remind this board and the public that, you know, we are going to have a meeting here on Friday. We'll call our operations committee meeting. There will be a little bit more detail on our capital planning efforts. And I think, you know, we have had gone through quite a few processes in the past few years dedicated just to infrastructure planning. I tried to summarize it here in two slides. But like I said, there will be more information here coming on Friday and in future sessions. But generally speaking, you know, the background on our infrastructure planning is that capital planning was the primary focus of the district before the drought. Our baseline CIP or our capital improvement program of about twenty five million dollars per year was approved in the last budget cycle. So that was kind of our our baseline, you know, keeping things moving and keeping things funded at a baseline level. In order to do that, we have what's called the capital maintenance fee or the CMF, as you'll see in many of our documents, that was implemented in two thousand nineteen as a means to provide more stable funding for the maintenance and upgrades and improve resilience of our overall capital program. And so that that fee itself provides dedicated funding for pipelines and storage tank replacement projects, provides funding for pump station upgrades, wildfire preparedness, watershed improvements. It also provides for debt service, whether we want to use that for existing debt service or for new debt service. The the bottoms set of bullets there, the district developed a ten year financial plan in two thousand twenty one. So this is part of kind of a three or four year cycle of really looking into our capital program. The tenure financial plan, you know, was a process that involved multiple board workshops. And at the end of that, the board landed on what we call the hybrid model. And so that essentially identified a higher level of ongoing spending there. So it increased our capital spending from the current baseline of twenty five million dollars to what was going to be a plan of thirty seven million dollars. And then my final bullet point on here is that, you know, that same thirty seven million dollars in two thousand twenty one, that's now, as we've updated kind of the cost for those projects, that's now forty four million dollars just because the way inflation has come through in the last two years. And so, you know, we're, if you kind of do the quick math on this one, I I see the numbers are kind of far apart in the slide, but our baseline spending plan of twenty five, you know, compared to what we're the board had kind of landed on this hybrid plan, which is now forty four million. That's almost another twenty million dollars of kind of annual shortfall that we're not funding towards our capital program as we currently have it set up. So the challenge is here, not only are we, you know, kind of underfunding on a baseline level, but, you know, because of the financial situation on the operating side, because of the way that we have seen lower water sales, we've had to use our C N F or we have to use our capital maintenance fee funds to to pay for our existing debt service. And so we had to divert funds away from our capital program, use those funds for debt service. And that has actually resulted in an increased number of unfunded projects. So above and beyond the last, the baseline figures of the last slide, we've had to delay maintenance and improvements in a couple of key areas. So as the second bullet point shows here, it reduced our capital spending for pipeline replacements, for watershed improvements and for pump station upgrades. We've also had to pull back on the planning efforts for Smith Saddle, AMI and some of our treatment plant upgrades. So with that, we're, you know, pushing even harder on grants and loans to and we'll continue to leverage those for our highest priority projects. We may need to use bond funding to kind of in the short term to address some targeted infrastructure needs. And then, you know, I think as we talk about rate setting and you talk about budget planning for the next couple of months, the construction costs for any water supply enhancement projects, which is above and beyond kind of our baseline CIP, those also have to be kind of considered and incorporated into the future planning efforts. And so, you know, with that, we have our debt service coverage requirements, the Director Smith mentioned at the beginning, our bond covenants. And we also have, you know, board policies on the total amount of aggregate debt that that we can hold here at the district. And so, you know, these are a lot of kind of competing factors between our baseline, kind of an expanded, you know, infrastructure program, new water supply projects, they're all going to be part of the overall capital planning effort. And again, this is just two quick slides on this and we could spend a whole, you know, session or two or probably even ten on this. But this is just really to kind of introduce the topic. And like I said, we'll talk about it more on Friday at the operations committee meeting. Okay, so this slide here, I'll kind of slow down a little bit for this one. This this the attempt of this slide here is to really kind of take all the things I've talked about for the past half hour or so in terms of, you know, revenue shortfalls, in terms of inflationary impacts, in terms of the the pressures, the headwinds we have on our on the district's finances. And I tried to put them into one slide for forecasting, so kind of starting to pivot here and her in towards how we're going to plan for this in the upcoming budget cycle, the upcoming rate setting cycle. So, excuse me, what I have before you here is our key assumptions. And this covers both our operating and our capital fund, as it says on the top there. And then I have a range of the annual fiscal impact. The range, obviously, you know, as we'll talk about many times here going forward, you know, none of us have a pure crystal ball going forward in this. And some of these have a range, some of it's based on external factors coming into us and some is based on the board's policy direction for where we end up on these. But the overall financial impact or fiscal impact range is on the right. Some of these are revenue, as I mentioned, some are expenses and some are reserves, as we've talked about. But I'll just kind of go down the list here and list them off. So as I talked about at the beginning, the customer demand or our overall water, you know, production, we're assuming that's going to remain well below the long term average. So, you know, in terms of the impact to the district's budget, that's about twelve to fifteen million dollars that we need to kind of cover in the sense of revenue that would have come in if we had higher, you know, water sales. Since we're expecting lower water sales in terms of overall, you know, acre feet, it's twelve to fifteen million dollars of the financial impact at that level. Because we've used reserves and and we've used, remember, about forty million dollars in reserves over the past, you know, two years, we need to start building those reserves back up. And so I have a range here of five to eight million dollars, you know, per year. We'll have to start adding back into our reserves. Obviously, you know, I think there's a little bit of a sensitivity analysis there that we can kind of entertain going forward in terms of how quickly to build back those reserves. But somewhere between five and eight million dollars above and beyond what's needed for just our operations, we need to start building back our 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 reserve accounts with, to make sure we're ready for the next downturn of the next drought. Inflation, the third one down there, as I mentioned, you know, it's not just the inflation of the past, it's incorporated those costs going forward. And also, you know, inflation is not going to stop now or stop next year or even the year after. So we're going to expect inflation to continue to impact our core expenditure areas to between three to five million dollars. The purchased water, the fourth one down there. Again, we're going to assume not only that we're going to get a six to eight percent, you know, per year increase in the base rate from Sonoma County Water Agency. We're also going to assume we need more than the bare minimum, right? We don't, we're probably going to need one to two thousand acre feet per year more than the contractual minimum of fifty three hundred acre feet. So in order to account for that, that's another two to four million dollars per year. And I know that we've put a lot of time into this water supply roadmap planning process, the strategic water supply assessment. So, you know, we need to start implementing that and it doesn't just happen overnight. But, you know, we start to kind of hone in on the on the solutions going forward and start to really get into planning and design and by engineering and the environmental impact reports there. So we need to set aside at least one to two million dollars a year towards the implementation roadmap over the next four years. And then finally, as I mentioned, you know, as we fall behind in our our capital program, that we may need to use debt service to to increase investments in critical infrastructure over the next four years. And just as a general ballpark, if, you know, if we anywhere between fifty and seventy five million dollars with the proceeds, will cost us between three and five million dollars in debt service annually. So you can add up all those, you know, values along the the right hand column there and you get to some pretty big numbers, right? You get to twenty six to thirty nine million dollars of additional, you know, essential revenue that we need to be able to create here at the district to meet our obligations.
Brett, a quick question on that last one. Is that debt service, is that for maintenance and planned infrastructure improvements? Or are you factoring anything in that fifty to seventy five million dollars being part of the water supply roadmap?
So that's a good question. And so I think that's that's a good discussion for this board to have. From from a financial perspective at this point, I'm assuming that's just to kind of address deferred maintenance in our current system that we have identified in the past that we know is critical to our ongoing operations and to the health and safety kind of needs we have here. And it's not necessarily for new water supply expansion.
On Friday at the operations committee, we're going to be reviewing this one in some more detail with some tentative candidate projects for the board to consider in context of the overall budget as we develop it.
Thank you. And then one other quick question, in terms of this financial forecasting and 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 Director Smith has brought this up about our all the the staffing shortages that we have currently right now. Does this make into account maintaining that those vacancies? Or does this, would this include refilling those vacancies?
So at at this point in the budget cycle, in the budget planning process, we're assuming we're going to be refilling our positions. And so this kind of would be for the fully funded budget at the baseline it was set out essentially, you know, in the last budget cycle. So this is not an expansion of our current budget. It would just be filling the positions that we currently have in the budget. Okay, those are and those are, those are really important questions. I'm glad you asked them because there's, like I said, a lot of big numbers here, a lot of key assumptions. And so I think I think it's really good to kind of flesh those out as we go along, both here and it's been mentioned on Friday. And then also, you know, we're going to, I think I mentioned this at the beginning, but we're going to be coming back to this board and to the public in in many, you know, different instances between now and the spring to kind of really make sure that everyone has a good understanding of these as we go forward.
Right, Brett, just just the take home for me. Tell me if this is correct, that your analysis suggests we need about a thirty percent increase in annual revenues to maintain, you know, a well functioning system.
Yeah, you know, I think that's right. And so, you know, percentages are a little bit tough at this point because I think there's a lot of moving moving pieces. But I think if we just do that kind of basic math that we have, you know, a little bit over a hundred million dollar budget and you see the numbers down here in terms of the the needs going forward, I think it is, you know, somewhere close to that range. I think there's, you know, we still have some reserves and there's some timing impacts here. So I think there's, like I said, the percentages are a tough number to get to. But I think back to that up in math, I think you're you're pretty close to what it would take to get us, get ourselves back on our feet here is right around that thirty percent number.
Thanks.
Okay, so financial forecasting. So what this does is this takes a look at, you know, that the the slide I just had, you know, kind of in that thirty million dollar range. You know, this, the slide you have in front of you here more specifically for the operating fund, right? So what this shows is what happens over the next four years if we do nothing to our rates, right? And so if we just kind of left.
I just want to interject a little bit. I I we're we're definitely too early to say that a thirty percent increase is what we need. I think this is illustrative. This is ballpark, there's a lot of big numbers here. So that we're just, I think, I think Brett's trying to show that that there's a, there's a lot to take into consideration that goes into this and and we have some deficits and reserves to fulfill. I definitely do not want the public to think that that number is where we're going.
And that's a good point, too, Director Director Smith. I think we are too early in the process to put a number anywhere. I was just responding to kind of the general order of magnitude rates there, but I think you're right. It's it's. I was just responding to kind of the general order of magnitude rates there, but I think you're right. It's, it's really, really put our, our finger on any kind of a number at this point. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll, I, I, I'm glad that the Director Smith mentioned that and we, and part of what we're not factoring in here too, and, and our is an abundance, or I shouldn't say it, there's a significant opportunity for state and federal funding to help us with our work. And that I'd like to see us as I'm sure we all would chip away at that number as much as possible with grants and, and state and federal funding.
Okay, so this slide here is, is operating fund only. And so I think what I'm trying to show here is as you run that out over four years, right? So I have the current year, you know, the fiscal twenty-three revised budget there in the far left. That shows our, you know, current shortfall offset by some of our, you know, short-term savings strategies we have. And then it shows fiscal twenty-fourth, fiscal twenty-seven, the next four years. And the key things here are, you know, it shows this, you know, thirty million dollar initial shortfall in fiscal twenty-four. But if we leave our current revenue levels alone, if we just let those ride, it actually, our deficit grows, right? It grows each year to the tune of around five million or so, you know, so we end up in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven with this, with an operating fund shortfall of about forty-five million dollars. And now, obviously, this is not something we can let happen. And so this is more kind of theoretical at this point. But it just goes to show kind of again, the order of magnitude on, if we do nothing to our revenues, just let them ride. This is the kind of type of a, you know, financial forecast that we would be looking at with forty-five million dollar deficits, you know, in the next four years. What that would do, and I think obviously we would decimate our reserves, right? So this is our discretionary reserves. As he, as, as I mentioned at the beginning, the district, the district was well-funded, our reserve policies were, were very prudent before the drought. The, the reserves acted as they should during the drought. The problem with it is, is that you kind of see this trajectory going down, the pretty steep slope of the last two years. And if you let that kind of, you know, thirty million dollars or so deficit continue, it essentially, as my note says on the right there, if we don't adjust our revenues, the district will nearly deplete our reserves by fiscal year twenty-four. And so that's only one year away from now. And so there's certainly some, some short-term actions we need to take to avoid that. And then I think one thing I don't want to have lost on this, and it's something that Director Smith mentioned at the beginning, but you know, we have to, we have to replenish our reserves back to this, you know, in general sixty million dollar level, not only to prepare prudently for future uncertainties, but it's also a key component of our credit ratings, right? So when we go out into the market to take on debt, you know, we, we have our credit ratings from the Fitch and the Moody's and whatnot out there. Now, this is one of the key factors they look at is, is what is our reserve levels? How are we, you know, adhering to our policies? And, you know, do we have a plan in place for, to replenish them? And so I just wanted to again, point out that it's not only for our cash funding, for our own future uncertainties, but it's also in the credit market worlds to maintain our credit ratings. We do have to build these back up.
Brett, sorry to interrupt. I, 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 I feel like it's really important for us to, but I'm not sure this is the whole story, right? We, we have additional reserves beyond this. We have pension reserve funds that are non-discretionary, that are absolutely critical, right? That, 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 that we are going to keep. But there are other reserves not reflected in here. And, and I, I want to make sure that that at least our staff and others know that this is, this is reflective, I think, of what you're talking about is our operating reserves and our capital maintenance fee reserves, if I'm not mistaken.
And so, yeah, that's exactly right. Is this is our discretionary reserves. And so these are reserves that we have that, you know, are intended to do the purpose that we've talked about here tonight, you know, intended to kind of give us short-term relief when we do have the ups and downs of the, whether it's the economy or the, the overall, you know, weather and the environment. We do have other reserves on top of this, and I had a slide earlier that showed some of those. The problem with it is, is most of those really can't use for just normal business, right? We have reserves for, you know, future litigation and for, you know, legal reserves for exposure. We have reserves that we are required to keep on hand for some of our current debt obligations. We do have a pension reserve, you know, of about four million dollars that you mentioned. So they are there. Now, we can do some, you know, moving things around here and there, but essentially this, these are the reserves that we can use for this kind of planning. We can't really tap in those other reserves for kind of the run-of-the-mill operational.
Thanks.
Okay, so that brings me to the end of kind of financial planning in terms of, you know, the headwinds, the challenges we face in terms of, you know, financial plans, reserve rebuilding and whatnot. The next section of this presentation, you know, really kind of orients us around the cost of service study and our, on our water rates, you know, process overview. And then so I mentioned also that I, we do have, you know, Bartle Wells here with us, you know, Doug Dove and Eric Hilderson. Working closely with them right now on kind of the finer points behind this. I'll talk a little bit about kind of the process and the timeline here and some of the more specifics towards the end. But the first slide is one of the kind of, you know, orient this board and the public towards is that, you know, the water rate structure there in the middle. And that's going to be the kind of the final expression of really those key inputs that go around the, the center of the screen here. So, you know, we're looking at customer demand, we're looking at our operating costs, what are those going to cost us over four years? You know, we're really kind of going to take a deeper dive into capital planning, you know, starting this Friday and then over the next couple of months, what's the right level of capital planning? Reserves, we just finished talking about that, how quickly to build them back. Disaster preparedness overall, you know, climate change and what, what kind of investments to put in to, to, you know, get ourselves in the best prevention, your best position there. And water supply enhancement, and I don't have to tell this board or the public kind of how, how important that is, but that needs to be taken into consideration when we talk about our overall water rate structure going forward. So just getting a graphical kind of view of things I think we all are aware of. Some things maybe we're not all aware of is the finer points of the, the overall, you know, water rate setting process and the cost of service study. And so, you know, the bullet points here really are kind of, you know, highlighting some of the, the more important parts of the process. And so, you know, us, you know, as a water district in California, like every other water district, we are kind of beholden to the rules of outlined by proposition two eighteen. And that, that really kind of states the process by which all service fees and that are charged by any local government in California can go forward. It was passed in nineteen ninety-six as an effort to improve local control of tax assessments and overall property-based fees. And I think the key thing here for us is that establishes a procedural requirement for how we go about letting a fee or a tax, in our cases, a fee. One of the main things there is my fourth bullet point shows is that, you know, it requires a public hearing with advance notice mailed out to property owners and tenants. And so we will be scheduling that public hearing for later on the spring. In terms of the overall kind of, you know, meat of the process, the provisions of two eighteen say that our rates cannot exceed the cost of providing service. And so that's something we talked about at the very beginning, we can't make a profit off of this, right? They have to show that the cost of providing service is supported by the rates and we can't collect more than that. And I think the other part of it, that's, it's a little bit tricky here is that our cost recovery methodology must be proportional to the customer base, right? And so I think there's, there's ongoing, you know, discussion in terms of what does that mean? But I think in general, as we go forward, you know, and we, we set the rates, we really want to make sure we're, we're taking that proportional kind of concept. And we're applying that. So it's not just a kind of across the board type of a thing, right? We have a proportional rates that are, you know, kind of set proportion to the, to the cost of providing those services. And then at the bottom there is, is part of it, I've been talking about the last hour or so here is that the water rate structure also has to be sufficient for us to kind of can, keep, keep the business moving, keep the operations going forward. So as to cover operations, maintenance, capital improvements, debt service, reserves, and also water supply enhancement. So a lot of that stuff you saw on the first slide. So these are kind of the balancing factors we're using going forward as we take a look at a rate structure. The overall kind of the simplified calendar is that you start off by looking at your, your current policies and your current rate structure. And you know, how is that performing? You know, what kind of revenues is that producing? Who is it affecting and why? You look at the demand projections, right? How much water is needed by our customer base over the next couple of years? And so those, those parts of the process are largely complete at this point. The revenue requirement, that's really a large part of what I was talking about in the first hour of how much revenue do we need to support our operations? So that part of it, I think we're getting close to finishing the capital piece and then some of the reserve pieces, I think are still, still there and some of the future water supply enhancement pieces are still there to be determined. So we're still kind of finalizing the revenue requirements. Then the final piece, which will be what we do over the, the early part of this next spring, with the actual rate design, right? You get down into all the details about, you know, the different customer classes, the different tiers, you know, all those different kind of factors that go into the rate design. So we're not at that point yet. We are still kind of in that revenue requirement phase, the third one over here, but we will get there over the next few months. A little background on a current rate structure here. So, you know, the rate structure that we currently have was last updated in two thousand nineteen. Generally speaking, our customers pay for water service through a blend of fixed fees and variable charges. There's a mix of fixed and variable rates and variable rates are based on usage, right? We calculate the usage at each residence or at each commercial location. We issue bills on a bi-monthly basis. And so that means every two months is, is when we, the bills go out to our customers, a six, six bills a year. For our fixed fees, those include what we call the base water charge and also a watershed management fee. And then the capital maintenance fee, which you'll recall, recall, it was the most recent fee we implemented and that was implemented in two thousand nineteen. The variable charges that we have, the district utilizes what's called an inclining block structure. And we also have an additional summer allocation. So those are kind of a lot of you know, kind of non-common words. And so what that basically means that customers that use more water pay or high, pay a higher unit price, the more water you use, right? So we have four tiers. I'll show you in a minute here, as you cross the threshold by using more water, the unit costs go higher for those incremental units of water that are used. In the single-family classification, the higher prices begin after twenty-one C C Fs on a bi-monthly basis. And I'll talk a little bit about more about what that means in a minute here. With the summer allocation, the additional summer allocation that I mentioned, that means that, you know, the, the, the customers that we do have, the single-family residential customers receive an additional unit of water at lower tiers in the summer months. So in recognition that, you know, most users use more water in the summer, the district has had a history of providing more tier one or low-cost units during the summer months. And that's what we call the summer allocation. We do have a slightly different structure for our commercial and institutional customers. And that is based on a percentage of their baseline units as determined by our, our, our water efficiency and our engineering departments. And so they're a little bit different. They're, you know, they're a smaller portion of our overall base. And so I'm not going to talk a lot about commercial and institutional today, but I did want to point out that they do pay a different rate structure than our, our residential customers do. And so what I have here is kind of just a snippet of our rate structure. And you can see that it's pretty complex. And that's kind of one of the things that we realized, looking at it in terms of the rate structure review is that we have a complex system. I admit, this is a iterative process again of many years of kind of tweaking this and coming up with the different categories here. And so the, the matrix along the top there, the residential, we have different rates for single-family, for duplexes and for multifamily. You can see there's four tiers on the residential side, incrementally getting higher and higher prices, right? From, if you kind of just look at the far left column for tier one and single-family residential, it starts at four dollars and seventy-three cents per C C F. And as the notes there says, a C C F is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. That rises once you get to about twenty-two gallons or twenty-two C C Fs, it goes to eight dollars nineteen cents. At forty-nine C C Fs, it goes to thirteen seventy-eight and so on and so forth, until you get to the tier four, which is twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. You can also see kind of the, the two different columns in each category where we have, you know, one kind of level of usage in from December to May, that's our winter allocation. And then we have a different usage, which is increased number of units in each tier from June to November. And that's that summer allocation we talked about, or I talked about, where we have additional units provided at lower costs in the summertime. Along the bottom there, you can see that's our fixed charges. And so those are kind of a blend of meter size and then just kind of per customer charges. So we have our base water charge there, depending on the meter size ranges from forty-four dollars at five eighths of an inch meter to eighty-two dollars at a one-inch meter. And similar for watershed management fee and for capital maintenance fee, you can see how there's a rate structure there that's kind of correlated to the meter size that each residence. And then those are applicable also to commercial and institutional customers as well. So this just gives you a sense, again, there's, there's more to it. I think our overall rate structure is about three or four pages if you look at it. Because it knows kind of a general sense of what we're talking about when we say we're taking a look at our current restructure and how we can simplify that. And we can really kind of hone it in to make it more in line with the board's policy. When you kind of back away from that.
Sorry, Brett, on, on the rate structure, I'm really curious to understand how higher rates can be applied to larger users and the, you know, the increasing tiers under the cost of service and analysis procedure. But I'm guessing that's a fairly complicated process that we'll be getting into down the road.
Yeah, and then that is, that is right, that, you know, it's, it's a complicated process. And it's really kind of the crux of what we call our cost of service analysis. And that's why we're working closely with our consultant right now. The gist of it is, is that, you know, I think there's, there's a certain amount of, you know, infrastructure and, 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 you know, kind of structure of our size of our organization that we have to maintain for, for kind of the base, kind of low use of water. And then as we get into peak seasons and as we get into kind of the seasonal effects, and as we get into larger needs and larger overall water production, we have infrastructure in, in place to be able to handle that higher demand. And so whether it's, you know, on that kind of the tier unit, you know, as you're using more water, you're kind of really kind of stretching the, the limits of the system. And so it costs us more, you know, overall to provide that water at the higher levels. And then we talk about the, the fixed fees there, it's kind of more on that potential demand or in that idea that, you know, higher, larger meters use more water over time or have the demand at least to use more water over time. And so slowly just matching that, you know, kind of, you know, overall demand and the fluctuations throughout the year with how much infrastructure we have to have in place to be able to meet that demand, if that makes any sense.
I think it's a great start. Thank you. Yeah, let, let me just, if I could, Brett, add to that. So to add to that response, the other big kind of variable is the cost of the water itself. We only have so much of our lowest cost water, you know, on the watershed, going through the most efficient treatment plant. And once that water's consumed, the next tranche of water is more expensive. We have probably the West Marin reservoirs off mountain. And then we have Sonoma water, we have recycled water, we have conservation. So the, not necessarily in that order, but the, the tranches of water get more expensive and the higher users drive into that more expensive water. So that's a key variable that drives the tiers as well. Thank you.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the rate structure itself is relatively complex. There's a lot of different kind of, you know, different scenarios that a customer can have. And so what I think what we want to do on this slide here is just really talk about, you know, what does it mean to our average customer or the median, you know, customer? And so, you know, single-family customers are the most common here, the biggest part of our overall, you know, customer demand. And so when you look at the median customer on a monthly basis, again, you know, we do a bi-monthly billing cycle here, it tends to kind of skew some of the numbers. If you look at it just a monthly basis, how do our customers understand, you know, the revenue or the expenses they're paying on the water bill? You can see here that the, the median customer uses about, you know, four thousand one hundred gallons, about four thousand gallons a month. The, the water use charge, the variable charge for that's about twenty-six dollars. We have the three fixed fees, you know, base water charge, watershed management fee and capital maintenance fee, you know, combined. You know, we take that combined with the variable water charge. Most of our customers pay sixty-nine dollars a month or less, right? This is the median customer right in the middle. They pay sixty-nine dollars a month if you're right at the middle, less if you're, you know, a lower water user, more if you're a higher water user. And as I, as I mentioned, the capital maintenance fee with the first asterisk there that was added in two thousand nineteen for deferred maintenance and to enhance our wildfire prevention efforts. And I will just note here that this does not include our fire flow revenues, which are collected separately and are kind of set aside for specific projects as determined by the local Marin County Fire Agencies. And so again, this is just kind of more context setting as we get into what does it mean for customers? And the median customer, the one right in the middle, fifty percent pays about seventy dollars a month for their water. So kind of translating all that back into what does that mean for, you know, the overall rate structure, right? So, you know, I think what this graph is showing, there's a lot on this graph, what it's showing is, you know, all of our single-family residential customer bills and where they line up on this overall kind of bell curve, or as long as I think bell curve in this case, but the distribution curve you can see here. So the fiftieth percentile, you know, right there in the middle, you know, half, half of our customers using less, half using more happens to be right around eleven C C Fs on a bi-monthly basis, right? So every two months, eleven C C Fs is the fiftieth percentile. Seventy-fifth percentile, you know, right around nineteen C C Fs, right? So why is it important? Why do I even make these, these charts? And why do I talk to do these things? It's important because you can see the dotted red line there is where tier two pricing or incrementally higher water. You know, General Manager Hornstein just mentioned, that's where our higher costs begin, right? The cost of providing the, you know, additional water begins at that tier two level. Right now, we're, you know, seventy-five, almost eighty percent of our, of our customers are not really seeing that kind of, you know, pricing signal. It's not really affecting their, their month-to-month bills. And so we have this whole complicated, you know, pricing structure that really misses the first eighty percent of our customers. And I think in general, when you look at, you know, other agencies, you look at how you'd want to set, you know, overall, you know, kind of rate, you know, structure. You'd like to have a little bit more of an even balance, right? It may not be perfectly twenty-five percent in each tier because it has to match the cost of, you know, providing the water. But you don't want to have eighty percent in tier one and then all the rest kind of splitting up tier two and three and four. And so that's really something that we're going to, you know, take a pretty hard look at, you know, the next couple of months is where's the appropriate place to start setting these, you know, tier pricing signals? And in many cases, the pricing signals, not only are they based on, you know, the cost of providing water, but they are also in the element of, you know, conservation and the element of you know, trying to, you know, encourage, you know, through financial incentives, using less water here, especially that's important here in Marin. So this is something that's, it's, it's, it's trickier than it seems, but it is something we're taking a look at as we look forward in the. So this is something that's, it's, it's, it's trickier than it seems, but it is something we're taking a look at as we look forward in, in the next rate setting processes. What is the right place to set these tiers? And, you know, in addition to, you know, what the price is within each tier, but I just wanted to kind of really make a graphical kind of representation of why we're even looking at tiers. That's because we have eighty percent or so of our customers that aren't even, you know, touching that second or third or fourth tier when we talk about single family residential customers.
And, and three cheers for our awesome customers who are saving water and in tier one. Uh, who have listened to uh the message that we've put out that have responded to the impact of drought. And I think, I, I think we should be thinking about rewarding uh a- as much as anything than trying to squeeze more out of people. No doubt then on the higher ends, we can do better. There are people who are still wasting and, and uh we can all do better. But um, I, you know, I think we get some positive messaging back to Adrian or around um rewarding tremendous efforts by the vast majority of our community.
But, but, but I do, I do want to.
Sorry, go ahead, Ronchi.
Sorry, sorry, Matt, just, I, I do want to add though, you know, um. The complexity of the cost of service analysis as a basis for setting rates does limit. Or, or, or does strongly determine, I, I think, our ability to. Establish where the different tiers fall. Um, so I hope we can move to a system that is more progressive in terms of rewarding uh. Conservation, but nevertheless, we have to keep in mind that we're working with the, the, the custom service analysis. As, as a basis. So just, it's, it's an interesting thing to wrap, to kind of wrap my head around.
Brett, I'd just say one quick thing.
Yep.
Um, this is a great graphic, so thank you very much. This helps paint the picture quite well. Would it be possible to get a similar breakdown uh based on meter size for the customers?
I mean, generally, yes, it is. Um, I think, you know, we've, we've taken a look at that over the years and, you know, there really is a high correlation of meter size and overall water use. And so I think it would be similar, but I, I can work on kind of a more finer breakdown, kind of adding meter size into this for, for future presentations.
Cool. Or just a separate graphic just showing the breakdown of, of the meter sizes throughout the district would be helpful.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and then the, you know, the. Director Kush, you had mentioned, you know, parts of what I'm about to say here, but when we talk about the water rate design, there really is kind of a competing. Uh, kind of interests, competing forces, competing legal requirements in many cases. So in one sense, we are looking at, you know, rate requirements, what do we have to maintain for financial sufficiency? Now, how do we maintain legal compliance to make sure that, you know, all of our rates are, are rooted firmly in the cost of service, which is what you're mentioning? At the same time, how do we use the water rate, you know, structure for policy considerations, right? How do you use it to make sure our revenues are more stable and we're not seeing these big swings from year to year? You know, when we do have conservation, when we do have, you know, fluctuations in the weather. Now, how do you use them to encourage conservation to, in like Director Smith said, how do you reward conservation, you know, and make sure that, you know, those who are really using less water are paying less for their water? And how do we make sure that it's affordable for our entire rate base, right? We have sixty thousand customers across the district. We need to make sure we design rates that are affordable for everyone. Uh, we need to make sure that, you know, they're, they're easily administered, right? I mean, I think, you know, for, for those that don't know, we have a relatively, you know. Uh, experienced all use for a financial and billing system, experienced meaning old. We have an old financial system and old uh rate system, a billing system. So we need to make sure we design rates that actually can, can be administered well, right? We can actually, you know, accomplish what we say we're going to accomplish when we want to build, you know, in terms of a certain design. And then finally, we need to make sure that our customers understand, right? We, we've talked about this a few times today and then many times in the past, but, you know, the goal is not to catch anybody's by surprise. The goal is to give a predictable rate structure that you can plan your budget around, right? You can plan your monthly budget around your, your business, you can plan your family budget around. Where we want to make sure that, that we're, we're not catching anyone by surprise and that the understanding is there so people can have more control over what their ultimate bill is um in terms of how much water they're using. With that in mind, you know, I think this, this district has a pretty, you know, long and good history of providing discount programs available to our customers to kind of really help. The affordability and, you know, and in acknowledgement that not everyone's coming to this, you know, from the same uh position. So our, our three kind of discount programs that I have highlighted here. Uh, are, are really critical in the sense of they, they complement overall rate package, right? So, you know, for the medical disability discount, for, for, for those that need to use extra water for medical purposes, we waive our fixed fees. Uh, we give additional water at the tier one rate, right? So we give additional twelve units of water each month at the tier one rate. We have four hundred uh customers currently enrolled in that program and cost the district about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we do have an income based program um where we waive our fixed fees. Um, if you qualify under. Uh, the federal housing uh limits of eighty percent of the low uh, median income here in the county. And so we have a thousand enrolled customers there. Uh, and that ends up costing the district about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in overall assistance. And so that does help out our lowest uh income uh families here in the district. And we also have a super saver program that was implemented recently that provides an automatic uh eight dollar per month discount. For the five percent of lowest users in the district. So if you're in that five percent of low water users, you get an automatic eight dollar uh. Uh, discount on your monthly bill, uh, that it, it packs about three thousand customers across the district. And again, it costs us about a hundred and forty four thousand dollars a year. So these are key programs really just to make sure that we are, you know, making water affordable and have the kind of support systems in place for those that can't afford it. Uh, and then the super saver program is for those who really are using a low amount of water automatically, you're getting the discount each month.
And Brett, these are, as you know, um, but to share. These are funded through non rate revenue. And we do that, we need to do that to be consistent with proposition two eighteen. And that's a common practice throughout the industry. So for example, rent um of property. That's non rate revenue and we can use that for sorts of programs.
Like cell phone towers? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, exactly. Cell phone towers, we have a piece of property over by Larkspur Landing, yes.
Nice.
Uh, Brett, Brett, can you remind me what the uh income requirements are to qualify for the waiver program?
Yeah, that's a good point. And so it's, it's, it mirrors the kind of the, the, the federal housing, you know, figures here from Marin County. And so to qualify for the waiver program on income for a single family or for, for a one person household, I should say, is eighty three thousand dollars a year uh this year. And if you're a family of four, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if you're under eighty three thousand as a single household member or under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as a family of four, you would qualify for, for this discount.
Thanks.
All right. So I have two slides here. It means you're just to kind of highlight, you know, how, you know, s- some of the resources we have online in terms of making sure customers understand the bill, right? So this shows kind of a, the, the header of each, you know, paper bill that we get, you know, each month. Uh, it does, you know, show the contact information, shows your water usage, shows your, you know, any kind of important messages coming out. Uh, this is a kind of a screenshot of our actual website. And so there's more links and more, uh, you know, information on the discount programs that we've, I just talked about. And more information there on our, on our overall website. Um, and we do have a pretty robust, you know, communications outreach plan. And so for that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Adrian here to cover these next couple of slides, which is talks about the uh communication strategy for the district.
Thanks, Brett. Uh, good evening, directors. Adrian Martin's Communications Manager. Um, so obviously Brett has laid out a pretty good picture tonight of, um. Uh, what we will be communicating to our customers um over the next several months, and it is very important to us. We understand how critical um a rate setting is for our customers. And so. Uh, we are keeping that in mind as we develop this plan. We have two primary goals for our communications. We want to ensure transparency and accessibility of information. Um, we want to make it easy on our website for people to find information. Uh, we want to make sure that we're proactive in getting the word out about every step of the process. Um, and then we want to ensure that our customers understand the challenges that we're facing um in the basis for the funding needs. Um, obviously Brett has lined out a number of factors that are contributing to our financial situation. And so I'm coming up with a. Good concise ways to communicate that to our customers is going to be critical to our process. And, oh, next slide, Brett. Thank you. And, and so as we look at how we're going to communicate with customers and stay in touch, and we're really focused. On a number of different uh communications outlets and strategies for doing that. Um, redundancy is going to be really important. I'm using a number of different platforms uh to make sure that we are reaching our customers and they're aware of, um. All of the steps of the process. Um, really to start that though, we want to have a good foundation. Um, and those first two bullets, communications toolkit and internal communications really go hand in hand. Um, and so we will be developing uh robust FAQs um and key messaging and talking points and fact sheets. Um, the, both that we can share with our board, um, but also with our staff. Um, and especially our customer service facing staff, uh, not necessarily those that are directly working on rates even, but those that may have conversations with customers. Get a phone call, get a walk in, um, where they can be supportive and helping have a good interaction, um, when a customer does have a question about rates. Um, so we want all of our staff in the district to at least have an understanding of the process. Um, and what is being proposed and where those resources are so they can help direct customers to the right place, even if they can't um answer all of their questions. And, and then. Uh, obviously, we're going to have a number of board meetings and ultimately a public hearing in May that Brett mentioned. Um, and so for all of those, we want to promote each step of that, um. In advance, and so that our customers are able to tune in, that they can participate. And that they're able to go back, watch recordings of meetings, um, and they know what's happening and, and the steps in that process. Um, and then we will be looking at doing customer workshops as well. Um, we will have a series of those, both virtual and in person. Um, and throughout our service area, um, so that we can provide uh good opportunities um at multiple locations and times um to meet our customers' needs. Uh, we will making, be making our virtual. Uh, workshops available online, the recording after for those that missed the meetings. Um, and these are really going to be a chance to have a kind of more robust uh back and forth dialogue with customers, have a chance to answer all of their questions, get their input and feedback. Um, outside of just a more, the more formal public meeting, um, or board meeting where they have their three minutes and don't necessarily get a response right then. Um, and then we'll be doing additional stakeholder engagement. We want to make sure we meet with our key uh. Stakeholder groups, uh, Marin Conservation League, our Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers and others, um, so that they are. Uh, dialed in and engaged in the process, um, and have a chance to provide direct input to us. Uh, we will have a dedicated webpage uh that will be updating frequently throughout the rate setting process. Um, that will be published uh at the beginning of January. Um. And then we'll be relying heavily also on our digital outreach. Uh, we have our monthly e-news, which has twenty two thousand subscribers. Um, on all of our communications, we'll be uh requesting or encouraging customers to sign up. Uh, for our e-news if they aren't already, as that'll be a consistent way uh that we'll be proactively communicating about the rate setting process. And we'll also use our social media channels, Twitter, Facebook, um, Instagram next door to communicate um as well. And then we'll be engaging with our uh news media partners. Um. Obviously, we want to issue news releases at the key, key milestones throughout the process. Um, as soon as we have our community workshop scheduled, we want to get a news release out about that. Um, when the Prop two eighteen notice is going to be going out, um, and other key uh points of the process as well. Um, and we'll also be uh looking to schedule a meeting with the editorial board for the Marin IJ. And, and then we'll be looking at print communications as well. We are planning, um, to put a notice in our winter on the waterfront bill insert. Uh, which will run in the January and February bill cycle, uh, to make sure customers are aware, um, of the. Rate setting process that it's beginning and um how they can participate and be involved in that. Um, we'll also uh be printing messages on the bills. Brett showed you a little screenshot in the last slide of what a bill looks like. We have a special little box on there where we can customize messaging. And so that'll be a place, um, where we can have a standing message about the rate setting process. Um, and we'll look to do some paid advertorials, um, where we, uh, you know, buy full page ad in the IJ or other publications, um. And present our information editorial way uh to just uh have another way to reach our customers, um, especially those that are uh what, reading the news every day. Um, and then finally, we'll do a Prop two eighteen notice. Brett did mention that earlier, and that will be. Uh, direct postal mail to every customer. So that separate thing going in their water bill, that's a, a direct mail piece. Um, next slide, thank you. And so I did put together a matrix, um, with a schedule of all those activities, just to give an idea of. What's going on and when, um, really from now until the end, uh, through July, um, if a rate. Schedule, a new rate schedule is approved, um, we'll be pretty busy. Um, we're definitely getting materials going now with a lot of that beginning to publish and circulate in January. Um, and then it'll be really an ongoing process, um. That will be following and supporting, um, as the rate development happens. Um, and then finally, I didn't mention it, but that last item there, correct misinformation. Uh, the communications team does monitor all of our channels, we monitor the media, and certainly throughout this process. And we want to be correcting misinformation that may be out there doing rumor control. Um, correcting information in the media, um, when needed. So it's going to be a busy several months. Um, looking forward to getting started.
Adrian, um, you know, when it makes sense, uh, it would be good to know, um. The degrees to which. Directors will be involved particularly in stakeholder engagement. Um, what's appropriate, where we can add value, um, had a best leverage, you know, the. Our ability to reach out and engage with the public. So your, your, your feedback on that would be appreciated, um, you know, down the road as your, as you're finalizing your plan.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that. I think there's great opportunity there. And then certainly a, a place where directors could be helpful in, in the outreach process as well.
Alrighty, so I have two slides here kind of in, in closing and in summary. Um, and just to kind of recap, I know we've been here for, for the better part of an hour and a half now. So recap kind of what we talked about and talk about next step. So our ongoing apparel, uh, our ongoing annual operating shortfall um is about thirty million dollars. And so those are those first couple of slides that we mentioned, kind of rooting in on the operating side, thirty million dollar shortfall going forward. The key factors there are reduced consumption, uh, inflationary pressures and the need to re- rebuild our reserves. Uh, on the capital side, which again, we'll be talking more about later this week. Uh, we know the capital investments are an increasing priority due to the aging infrastructure we have here. And so we will be looking at any opportunities to use bond funding uh to address critical needs in the short term. Um. And then, you know, kind of goes without saying, as we're talking here, the, the water rate revenue structure will be updated to reflect our current demand levels. And so, you know, we're working right now, as I mentioned a few times with Bartle Wells, to develop, um, you know, alternatives and options for rate increases. I mean, kind of it goes without saying that, you know, no organization can withstand, you know, such a, a major shift in, in, in demand, meaning a twenty percent drop. In overall, you know, water sales without having some sort of a change. And so we're trying to, to, to bring to this board and, and, and to the public. You know, different alternatives there as it comes to rate increases. And then finally, on the bottom there, I, I think it's easy to kind of go through these, you know, types of processes and then say, you know, this is what needs to be done. And I can, I can see with certainty what the path forward is. And I think it's just an acknowledgement here that there, there's a lot of uncertainties going forward. We're, we're really kind of, you know, waiting in an uncertain world for a variety of reasons. You know, financing your finance, financial projections in general and budgeting is, is always kind of a, a risky endeavor. None of us have a crystal ball. And I think in this particular organization, we're also dealing with the uncertainties of climate change, of weather and drought and all that goes with that. Uh, not to mention, you know, the, I think the impacts on, you know, wildfires and everything else, you know, that we have to deal with as a organization here in Northern California. And then economy wise, we never know what we're going to get going forward in terms of local economy, national economy. And I think we've seen this last year. Uh, with the kind of the geopolitical factors, even as far, you know, across the world in Ukraine or China. Uh, I think we have inflation coming our way. Who knows when that's going to stop? So there's a lot of uncertainty going into this. I think the one thing we do know is that, you know, we've, we've kind of can see the impacts on our, on overall, you know, bottom line and financials and the use of reserves. So we have to get ourselves in a better position to handle uncertainties going forward. Uh, I think we would probably also know that uncertainties are unlikely to go away, right? There's going to continue to be uncertainties in different areas, uh, you know, as we go through the next, you know, two year budget cycle and four year, you know, rate cycle. So just acknowledging that those are there and then none of us really have that crystal ball.
Yeah, Brett, y- you know, for. I, I think it's important to speak to, and you did it well, but just in a summary of what brought us here. And really, this drought was a natural disaster of historic proportions. And as you noted, we were relatively well prepared with reserves. Um, but with the level of conservation, thank you to our customers from a water supply standpoint. Um, we, we find ourselves in this need to recover from that natural disaster. Including looking forward with climate change in our future and the uncertainty it brings.
Okay, so next step says, and Adrian outlined quite a few of these, but you know, we'll continue to provide um updates throughout the winter and the spring. Those will be in various formats, uh, board meetings, public workshops, uh, online, social media. Uh, everything we have, we'll make sure we're providing, um, this board and the public with updates throughout the process. Uh, everything we have, we'll make sure we're providing, um, this board and the public with updates throughout the process. Uh, it'll all culminate in terms of, you know, the actual rates with a public hearing and we're, we're targeting, uh, May two thousand twenty-three for that public hearing. And then the schedule will be to have those rates effective, uh, in July of two thousand twenty-three. So that is my last slide here. I'll turn it back to, uh, the board with any questions and or, um, public if they have any questions.
Well done, Brett. That was extremely thorough and thoughtful presentation and super appreciative. And we got a lot of work to do and we'll get right at it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, this has been, this is really a lot of extremely valuable information about the district. Um, understanding how the complexities of the district is, is, I think, just is one of the fundamental challenges of. For all of us, um, and to understand the, the economic implications, as you've laid it out, it's just been fantastic. I know this presentation is, is up on our website. Obviously, you can watch the recording. I, you know, I hope that maybe, and then maybe this is for Adrian. When you look at a PowerPoint presentation, what's not there all but is all the great things that Brett was saying. And, and, and maybe the, if, as, as we have a piece that maybe explains this overall process, maybe we can find. We can develop something that is in between a PowerPoint presentation and having to watch an hour and a half, um, long presentation. That, that, that has some of the connective tissue. I just think that this is, uh, for, for folks who will ask questions about our. Our rate process going forward, this, what's in that presentation is so foundational. If you don't understand that stuff or you can't. Um, go back to it, you, you won't, you'll, you won't understand some of the key components of what we're going to have to wrestle with. One other thing I just want to encourage us to do too is, um, is, you know, that's a really busy six-month schedule. And, um, and the sooner we can start putting in some real dates. Behind things, you know, um, so that people can plan their holiday vacations or. Or whatever it is, like if we can, if we have key meeting dates and so forth, that we can start putting on the calendar, that will help people plan. And be able to attend and, and participate. Um, so I want to encourage us to, to try to flesh that out. As soon as we can, but it's a, a great presentation and it's really a lot of important work ahead of us.
Thank you, Monty. Uh, I think the other thing to keep in mind, especially for the new board members, is that we're facing a really heavy lift here. And I, I think you, you got the gist of that in Brett's presentation. You know, and, and you're going to need a lot of backbone. And a lot of. Firmness in your approach, and we just need to plow forward and get this thing straightened out. So with, with the change in the next two eighteen of having the, the drought. Increases. Brought into formal, uh, part of our rate, rate structure, it makes it a lot easier because when we have a, a. Uh, mandatory conservation, then there's a, a rate change that occurs. So we were penalized by that, by not having that. And now we will have it. So. Uh, but like I say, be prepared, um, two eighteens are, uh, quite an adventure, as you're going to find. But we look forward to the public comment and, uh, doing it as a team.
Okay, we have, uh, four members of the public who would like to speak. You, I just want to, they have three minutes. Um, the first three speakers, David Behar, Jack Kenny and Ed Jamison. So, Mr. Behar, I'm going to allow your permission, sir.
Thank you, Terry. Hi, everybody. Um. Great presentation, Brett. It reminds me how important it is to have lots of data. Uh, straightforward CFO telling you the truth when you're in a financial crisis situation. Old timers like myself will remember. Terry Stigall and Oreen Delgado, who helped us get through some financial crises back in the two thousand eight to two thousand and eleven period. And it makes me want to, um. In the presentation, reach for levers. There are many. And, and so I have just a few questions that I'm curious. Uh, in the, in the forecasting, you have customer demand, uh, being well below long-term average as a twelve to fifteen million dollar item. And then purchase water from Sonoma, two to four million dollar item. My question is, how much of that is dependent on weather? And if we did end up with an above normal year, because a lot of what we're doing here is scenario planning, would those, you know, numbers. Go down or potentially even disappear? Obviously, the filling of positions is the toughest of all issues, as Director Smith said. And has been a lever in the past for sure, but is a tough one for sure. And then the other thing. And, and this may be for a finance committee meeting or another meeting, um, Brett, is, is what kind of debt headroom do we have? Uh, and it, and it relates to the fact that this is an O and M crisis that we're in right now, but we also have a capital, a long-term capital planning situation that we need to address. That's going to cost some money. And so I'm curious about what, what kind of debt headroom we have without running afoul of our debt ratios and. Keeping our ratings good and all of that. And if that is, you know, something that can weigh into the problem solving in the, in the short term. Thanks.
Mr. Jack Kenny, please.
Hi, some of you probably, uh, remember me. But I was going to mention if MMWD is looking for anyone to do some. Looking for help with customer communication work and or considering a rate panel, I would most definitely. Be interested in being on the rate panel and taking part in customer communications. Especially given I did run for, uh, Water Board Director and have spoken to. A large number of constituents, uh, about their concerns. And was just interested in taking part to help with customer communications.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Mr. Ed Jamison, please.
Yes, thanks. Uh, this was another outstanding presentation by district staff tonight. I'd just like to comment on the possibility of using bond financing as a bridge to restoration of our reserve levels. Current operating cost must be covered by rate increases, not by bond issuances. That puts such costs onto the backs of the next two generations of Marin homeowners. And assuring reliable future supply is going to be expensive. M and W D's limited bonding capacity must be preserved for that purpose. If bridge financing is needed, a bank loan may be the answer. Perhaps Bank of Marin in particular might be delighted to accommodate for some public recognition. Thanks.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Larry Minnikes, Doug Kelly and Mimi Willard. Go ahead, Mr. Minnikes.
Good evening again. And what, what I want to say is that what's interesting tonight is there's no shock here. None of this is coming as a surprise, and that's really a testament to staff. And not just this presentation, but many previous presentations, going back really, uh, at least four years that I can think of to, to our last. Rate hearings, previous rate hearings. And, um, it's just clear we're, we are through a variety of factors in a tough place. And that we have to find a way through this. And so, um, to a couple of comments, I, I want to say. In terms of the telecommunications license fee, that's, uh, there's been an increase there. Does this go directly to the watershed? Uh, say less administrative costs, or does this go into, uh, it, it, my feeling is if it's on the watershed. The, those fees should go back to the watershed for use there. Um. To slide number eighteen, which is structural challenges, which is a big one, which is difficult for. Many to understand because of our geography, we have a very complex infrastructure system here. And, um, Director Smith said it's a communications issue, and I had already written down. Structural challenges with an arrow, education. Because that it, it's, it's really been an issue all along. People try to compare us to Palm Springs. I've heard us. Compared to Palm Springs in these meetings in person. It's just not apples to apples. It's not even apples to bears. It's two different worlds. One other comment, give me, I'm sorry, give me a moment here. Is. On the financial forecasting, um, where Brett said, do nothing, I assume that means also not bring staff. Just leave things as they are. So the cuts are still there. And if. If I understand that slide correctly, because I found that piece a little bit confusing. And the last thing is, uh, with all this planning, remember that we're trying to get from a hundred and twenty-four gallons today to a hundred and six gallons. In twenty forty-five, which is a fifteen percent reduction or roughly a half percent per year. And all of that needs to be also baked into, uh, the conservation part of this needs to be baked into all the thinking financially. And with that, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, yes, um, also, uh, Mr. Doug Kelly, you're actually next, but unfortunately, I'm unable to. Uh, you're using an older version of students, so I'm unable to, um, move you over. If you can come back onto Zoom and sign on with the, the newer version, then I can allow you to speak. I apologize, sir.
Carrie, I also say that citizen can call in if they want to try dialing in, if they go to our website to the dial-in information. Um, we're happy to take their comment that way.
Perfect. Thank you. Mimi Willard, right now, please.
Uh, yes. I think my public comment timer is not reset. Thank you. Um, so just wanted to mention as far as communications is concerned. The slide that we saw that had the revenue trend line at four percent, I'm not sure what happened there, but it's not the full picture. Um, it looks to me like it omitted the capital maintenance fee. Uh, which added another, I want to say sixteen million in, uh, twenty nineteen, and then back in twenty. Fifteen, I think it was, there was four million introduction of the watershed maintenance fee. Um, the, uh, base fees, and I believe in this rate cycle, have been increasing four percent a year. Um, from the twenty nineteen to the present. Uh, customer demand is hard to forecast, um, and that becomes the rationale for some very big fixed fees. I would point out that right now is forty-five, eight percent, forty-eight percent that comes from fixed fees. Exceeds the guidance of the, um, uh, California Association of Water Agencies, which suggests that it should not exceed thirty percent. So we're kind of out there. And, uh, I would again argue that we should be decoupling, uh, the fixed charges from meter size. Which, um, isn't proportional to anything. Um, but, um, this is an opportunity with this new rate cycle to consider rate design. And I don't mean just. Um, you know, simply, um, moving the, the tier cutoff, though that's certainly, uh, a piece of it. But I think it should be an opportunity for the board to look at, um, how do we want to design these rates? For example, I think, um, Larry Russell mentioned pre approving drought charges. I think that would be an important way to deal. With the fact that you need some revenue predictability. Um, you might tie rates in years two to four to the prior year's water revenue. If there's a shortfall that could be designed. Into your rate structure. Uh, you might consider some additional user fees, for example, recreation or non-residence. And other creative ideas. So I'm hoping that you will go to your rate design consultant. On Bart, Bartel Wells and ask them to give you a range of options to consider that aren't just the status quo rolled forward with inflators. Oh, and then, uh, finally, Ranji, you've asked about this, uh, other ten million dollars of, uh, financial shortfall. I'm wondering if some of that might be the pipe that was purchased for the, um, pipeline. If so. Can we monetize that as was suggested at the time that that was, that expenditure was approved? Thank you.
Thank you. And then actually, uh, Mr. Doug Kelly, thank you. Can I, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, first off, I want to say I thought it was a great presentation. Uh, the staff did a very, very fine job on that. Um, I agree with, um, Mr. Jamison. Um, I, I wouldn't want to see bonds issued. Um, for, for this current situation that, that the board finds itself in. I think the rate payers will understand, uh, rate increases. Um, I, I think that you're going to be able to get rate increases. People like myself will support it. Um, I think one of the problems we've had in the past is there, there haven't been rate increases on a regular basis. And, and an organization like, uh, MMWD can't, can't operate like that. So I would, uh, I'd like you to know that people will support a rate increase as long as it's just. Straight out, transparent, exactly what you're doing, why you're doing it, how you're doing it. And, and there should be an escalator, uh, to, to uncover, uh, uh, inflation. In addition to the rate increases you, you think you're going to need, but you'll have support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, next speakers, Mr. Roger Roberts and then Nate McKidric. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to make a comment, the last round of COSA hearings. The sorts of comments you got from the public, uh, if I remember correctly. Where I'm saving more water, uh, and yet my rates are going up. That leads to the question of. Community outreach. And quite frankly, the Water District hasn't done a very good job of explaining the complexities. And the cost structures associated with providing the water that we all use. And so I think it's going to be very important that you have a very good. And highly developed outreach. So the public will understand the why. You're going to need to have the sorts of water rate increases that will be necessary. Uh, don't skimp on that. Spend money to make sure the people understand why this is necessary. And then you will find it a much easier process. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McKidric, please.
Good evening. Um, that was a fantastic presentation. I feel like the district's in good hands with the staff and board. Um, I have three points. First, like the last caller said, don't underestimate the willingness and ability of most rate payers to pay higher rates. If in exchange, we get water security and a well-managed watershed. Four dollars and seventy-three cents for seven hundred and forty-eight gallons of clean, pure water delivered to my home. That's a bargain. That's less than a gallon of gas that I have to drive down the street to get. Second suggestion is, don't use CCF in the bills. Switch to gallons. People don't know what a CCF is. We all understand what a gallon is. And in fact, all of our appliances. Um, when you see how much gallons of water they're supposed to save, it's in gallons. I think we need to get more visibility into what rate payers are getting in their bills for what they're paying. Get rid of the CCF. The third thing is, consider reforming the tiers. As was pointed out in the presentation, most rate payers are in tier one. Tier one is a huge variation from one to twenty-one to twenty-six CCFs. There's a huge difference between a household using seven as a family of four can do in Marin. And a family and a household using twenty-one or twenty-six. If you want to encourage people to conserve and take steps to conserve, you need to break up the tiers. So there's more rewards for people. And they can also see, gee, I'm using more than most households, but still. Something within tier one. You can't see that right now. So I would suggest if you can, consider reforming the tiers as well. To give people more visibility and more incentive to conserve. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. I have no further speakers.
Did we lose Larry?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
My chair is up.
My chair is up. You gotta stay present. Okay, well, I think that's it. That's the end of our agenda. Um, can't say thank you enough to, um, to the staff, uh, and that took all the time to explain things, especially Brett. I'm, I'm sure that this. Took a lot of work on your part and Adrian and Ben and, and many others who are not on the call. And also, um, obviously, our new board members, um, all the work that it, um, took for you to be here. Um, is, can, can't be, uh, underestimated. A lot of work that you are already, um, serving. And you know now what you've gotten into. Um, and it's, um, it's a lot of work, but it's for, um, it's our community. And, and, uh, especially thanks to all of the folks who have tuned in tonight. We have a good attendance, which is great. Um, we really appreciate it. It's been a long night. Um, but thank you. And, um, with that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, Monty. Had a little, little Zoom problem there, but I'm back.
No worries. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks.